All right, let's go ahead and get the meeting started and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sharon. Sharon?
Yes?
Before we get going, I'd like to make a motion to only discuss pay raises and forget the budget, the bonus clock.
Okay.
I'd like that to be a roll call vote.
Okay, is Jane there?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to do a roll call vote?
Nobody's seconded it yet, Sharon.
Okay. My main motion, would someone like to second that?
Raise this only for county employees and not a bonus. Okay.
Did someone second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Your motion was you were moving to give raises only and not bonuses to county employees.
Right.
Okay, Bob seconded it.
Okay, will you restate that, I'm sorry?
His motion was to give raises only and not discuss bonuses, not do bonuses to county employees, and then Bob seconded it, so roll call, hang on, give me a second. Roll call vote taken. Okay, Winta?
Yes.
Riker Payton?
No.
Patterson?
No.
Wool?
Yes.
Bettington?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Anne Frankhill?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion carried, 5-2. Okay.
I just want to remind the council a couple things we need to discuss or think about, Jane, Sharon. We need to maybe talk about addressing rainy day fund for 2027's pay period, extra pay period. We did do that last time, and it kind of snuck up on us and got us, but we might want to set something aside in a rainy day fund for that for the future, about $300,000. And also move the money that we talked about for tuck planning and boilers from the excess to the rainy day fund as well.
Well, Sharon, I've had a couple of questions I want to ask the commissioners before we do anything else, because it might affect-
Those are two items we've already discussed or finalized.
Mike?
I'm just going to make it go on up to Tim.
If I have a question, I'm going to ask the commissioner, I'm going to ask it.
Yeah.
Dale?
Are the commissioners present?
Dale's here, yeah. Two Dales are here. So Dale and Dale, on a couple of your things that you've got coming out of County General, some big items. You've got the building, property and structure, and some equipment, some high dollar things. I didn't say insurance. And I was wondering if we could move those items over to a department fund. If it's allowable by the state code to move them to account 1138.
Talking to me or Mr. Muntz?
Both of you.
Kate, what page are you on?
I'm not on a specific page, I'm on the printout Jane gave me. So it would be account number 30310.
It's insurance.
Not on my page.
It is insurance. Insurance for building, property and structures.
Okay, so go on down to the repair equipment. You've got service contract there. There's other things. Those two things, they didn't move to 1138?
Which two?
I don't have page numbers.
That's something, the number.
We're talking about funds.
I understand. Got an account number.
30500. And 300550.
Dale, did you get your computer today?
50,000?
It said boiler on my computer.
300050?
Can you stick this up? That's your repair equipment, why do you do that? $500,000? $500,000?
I think that's high.
That's for the vote, we want to move that.
My point is, is there things that from County General that you're asking for being moved over to account 1138 since there's more money sitting there to give to County General some relief?
What was the low service contract deal?
That's for the computer systems. That's for the auditor and treasurer's office, that all you're finding feel like what you're looking at right now, your budget software, your financial software, your payroll software. That's a set amount.
Is there anything the county commissioners are asking for, Jane, that could be moved to account 1138? To give County General some room?
You know, I can't tell you off the top of my head what the statutes are regarding that account, so I can't tell you what is and isn't allowable. I can look it up, but not right now.
I mean, because there's several similar things coming out of 1138 that are mentioned in commissioners.
Right.
You know, so they look similar. And that would give more breathing room to County General. The same could be looked at on the 1140 account. There's a lot of money sitting there. Some of those things that they want to take out of County General could be moved to 1140 fund, that would give County General more breathing space.
Were you going to search the page, Kate?
No, I'm not, Sharon, this was a printout Jane gave me.
Okay. It's hard to reference stats, I don't know where we're at.
Well, if you look at the commissioners' budget, okay?
You want to put it in Q cap then?
I'm just asking if there's anything in the commissioners' budget that can be moved out of their budget to the fund in 1138 or the fund 1140.
1140, Cume Building Courthouse, that's page 40, Sharon, 1140 is page 40, 11138? 1138?
1138 and 1140, out of two other funds. I was wondering if anything the commissioners are asking for could be moved over to those funds, since there's a lot of funds sitting there.
Q cap, so it's 40 and 42. Sharon, there are those. Dale, do you want to explain those, Rick? Q cap development and Q cap 40.
Q cap is 42, Q Building Courthouse is 40. And that's, those are the two she's suggesting we could move a couple of line items from the commissioners' budget over there.
Well, there's three, actually, here's three, 1138 and 1140.
What is the question, Mike?
She would like to move some of these items from County General to either 1138 or 1140, which is Q cap courthouse, Q Building Courthouse, and then Q cap development.
There are expenses that are in CCD and Q building that are interchangeable with expenses in County General. But if I understand it correctly, since we have already submitted budgets for all three of those funds, and each one has its own levy, once Jane submitted that to the state, you cannot increase it over the amount that was advertised. Is that correct, Kate?
That is correct, yes.
So in order to do what I think you're thinking, you would have to end this budget process, re-advertise, and start all over again.
Okay. Well, next year, why don't you take some of those things out of County General that can be put into these other accounts, because you're draining County General so much. Some of those things could come out of these two other funds.
Well, bear in mind, Kate, if you've watched these funds, the levies assigned to those funds are very small. They don't P money.
I know.
And we are-
There's a lot of money sitting-
We are using it, too.
There's a lot of money sitting in both of them right now, that could have helped relieve County General.
Well, I don't know how to answer that right this year.
I'm just saying, next year, maybe you should look at using some of those funds, instead of using it all out of County General.
Well-
Put your request in writing and submit it.
You just said you can't do it this year, and I was just-
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying for next year, come the minister.
Saying that Dale, we've worked with him for many years, Kate, and his eyes are very, very frugal about that.
You're talking about the jail.
We're just talking about the jail, Kate, we're talking in general. Dale's eyes have been very frugal and mindful of where to take money from, where he can't take money for himself. Is any person out of trust to make that decision? I mean, you know.
Well, I just think-
But what Kate's request, I would just, you know, take that under advisement. If we can do that, please do that.
I just think that the budget's padded.
Hi.
There's so many places that you've got the same thing, you've got services, and there's no explanation of what it is, so we have no idea. It's too generalized, so we don't know what we're giving you money for.
Well, here's that big page, that big printout that was like, I don't know, like 30, 40 services, and those are all remote contracts, so we have somebody, each and every other that are-
Right, yeah.
Renewal or whatever.
Yeah, there's, well, the one you're, I think you're referring to, multiple vendors are paid out of that line item.
I think that's what we're not talking about.
I've never seen it, so I don't know.
It shows a lot, that big one.
But there's a lot of things in here in County General, I think, are just so generalized that we're just saying yes to services, equipment, IT. We don't really know what we're spending our money on. And it's repeated over and over in several accounts.
I can figure I know everyone at the council, can't you? What do we spend it for?
Well, the template we use for these line items was here one night, got here. And if you think, oh, that needs to be changed, then I think you'd have to be all the same.
I just think council should know what the money's going towards, and it's just a general word or two.
You know, that's one reason that you all were given your budget books the first week of August, because you had weeks that you could have asked for that detail, and not like right now. And I can give you that detail, but I can't sit here right this minute and say that $160,000 with the service contracts. But I did sit here the one night and name off all the different vendors that are paid through, with those service contracts. But I mean, I'm sure Dale kind of feels a little bit of the frustration that I feel. Most of you people, I don't see you 12 months of the year, and you'll come in here and budgets, and all of a sudden you have questions.
That's not true in my case.
I didn't say it was, I said most of you. But this type of question, I could have given you a full list of every vendor, so.
I think I know Dale well enough, if we had his daughter left, I'd give it to him. I trust him.
He's been a couple of years.
Now, if, you know, our Q funds are not totally broken, and we certainly don't want them to be. That's why they call them Q funds. And it's a little savings account that you have to rely on sometimes to make ends meet. My goal here, Kate, is not to spend every last dime we have. I'm not made that way.
I guess what still gets at me is that if you look at last year and what was appropriate, what was actually spent, there was $2.2 million that wasn't spent, so somebody's padded something somewhere.
Well, I think the commissioner deserves a pat on the back for that.
That's what I was going to say, that's not padding, that's frugality, that you thought you'd need more, but you didn't use as much as you thought you would need.
It could also be, it could also be on his side, too.
And that's on us, if we let that go by, that's on us.
But we don't know what they're spending it on.
Again, that's on us, like Jane said, we have to, we have to understand the budget, we have to understand it, because if we don't understand it, we should be talking to Jane.
Why do you think I'm asking these questions now, but it's like, and like the supply, you've got supplies down here?
Yeah, I'm not trying to butcher that, Kate, at all, but-
Can I talk?
You are, you did a great job.
Like on office equipment, is there something in particular you want to buy for $45,000?
Which line are you talking about, Kate?
Count 40408.
I don't have the same material you're referring to. All I've got is your budget, but you have something that I have no access to.
The Q, is it County General?
So I believe whenever Michael, Jane corrected, if I wrote, but I believe Michael explained that when he was there, wasn't that something to do with the copiers, the buying of firewalls for the jail?
Are we, I'm sorry, which fund are we looking at? 1138?
Not yet, I think she's talking about 1138.
Yeah, it said 404-
08.
08. And in my notes, I have, which it has not been purchased yet, if this is something incorrect, if I wrote, but they're getting a copier for the auditor, and then firewalls for the jail, and there's $7,000 needing to go to the police department, is that Reagan Bell? He explained a lot of that.
Well, then there's other accounts that have computers, so it's like you-
Remember that, Jane?
I do, yes, I don't have that word for word in my notes, but-
Right, right, I just have that written down, because he came in and he did explain that line.
I think what Kate, kind of agree with that, those computers and stuff like that, I'd really like to have a full discussion, not say you can't get the stuff, but have them check into leasing, have them check into buying, of cost comparison, where you save the money, because we're just, we're just spending money on copiers and computers, doesn't make sense to do it that way, or does it make sense to lease them?
I reached out to some other counties, and a lot of other counties lease these copiers and computers.
Everybody does.
Yeah.
And then the enterprise agreement, which means you're buying a block of Microsoft Office, Microsoft Office software. Right now, I don't rely on it only one per person, that costs us more money. If you get a government enterprise agreement, that will save you a bunch of money, and we never look at those kinds of things.
Well-
Part of that is, is if you guys, as commissioners, and that's something tonight, it's not a dig or anything, but you're not IT people, so you wouldn't necessarily know that, to ask that. There's a lot of things that we don't know and ask, because we don't know, we're not in the industry, too.
Well, you're correct, I am not an IT person, for sure. That sort of technology is over my head. But I will, I want you to understand this, on the fund 1138, just about all that were requested by Michael King, our IT director, and the commissioners share that fund with our IT director, and we only add, what, Dale, about two or three lines to that page, the rest of it is all things that Michael King has requested.
I think you probably shouldn't have asked him to do that.
He knows, Michael knows his job.
He does, but I've asked him many times about enterprise agreements, he won't do it.
Well, and I honestly cannot tell you if leasing copiers and computers is cheaper than buying them.
Well, there's a reason that all the government entities and large corporations are doing it.
Yeah.
It's not for pissing my money, it's for the cost saving, for the fact that they're, every two or three years, that machine's getting recycled, turned over, so no cost to us, maintenance taken care of, Michael doesn't have to do a thing, you call King goes, or not King goes, Nokia or whatever, who makes printers, they can adhere it, there you go. So we did a large format printer downstairs in the surveyor's office, we leased that, so you guys bought one now. Originally, that was leased for two or three years, and they can't guarantee, it's care of all that stuff, you don't take care of it, you don't worry about anything. You can break it down, your job, print job, so you're printing for, if somebody comes into Jane's office, the treasurer prints a bunch of stuff on the treasurer's office, you have to enter code to charge it to the treasurer's office, if it's that important. There's a lot of, there's a lot of value to it. And it's not, we're not talking about maybe a couple hundred bucks, we're talking a lot of money. We got a, we're a large, we're a large corporation now, but I think it's worth looking into, and I come here on. I'm not saying I'm right, but I'm saying it's worth looking into.
Well, I'm saying that I honestly do not know.
I understand.
And I'm not, I don't object to looking into it, but I would certainly want to include Michael King in that discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So my question would be, at this point in the budget, how does that conversation take place?
For this year, I think it's a, I think we just have the discussion with Michael, we do it, but I think before anything's really purchased, that we at least see, as a council, that we're made aware of these, the due process, kind of the quotes, or how he's going about that, so we can see him satisfy our curiosity whether that makes sense or not to go in on that avenue. That's it. I don't know, I'm not going to tell him what he has to do, what he doesn't have to do, that's between you and him. You decide if it's cheaper to buy them, or cheaper to lease them, and you decide to go the opposite way, that's not you guys' issue, but as a council, at least we do our job.
Sure. No argument here.
So if that doesn't help us for County General, but I think, I think we should maybe bring Michael in at some point, ask and talk with the commissioners, and just explain what we're thinking. And I'm not trying to step on his toes and tell him I do his job, because I couldn't do his job.
So not the job?
I just understand it, I understand what it entails, I understand what he takes care of, that's as far as it goes. Again, soft, soft, perfect, working a server, screwed up.
How often do they need to be updated if you're leasing them, Mike? I mean, every three years?
Usually, there's a agreement, you do two or three years, usually typically, computers, like since you buy them, it's going to be, they're already on a date, they're already, you're already behind in technology.
But would you want a three-year lease, and then-
That's up to Michael and the commissioners, what they want to do, that's not me to decide, that's whoever, because they get the best price, so if they lease a car, you get a better deal on the three-year or two-year, same deal. But we're not stuck on any monitors, everything's all included, the whole thing.
I guess where I'm coming from, the option to buy wouldn't do you any good, because the computer's outdated anyway.
No. No, they usually do it with, the companies I work for, they make available to employees at a discount, they donate them to a school, or I got some for Charmaine, Charmaine?
Charmaine.
Charmaine. I got some for Charmaine for her shop, her business, or-
Fund.
Donation cafe.
Cafe, thank you. I got like six laptops for that, for free, for her, and I got some for Sharon.
Yeah, you got some for the house of her, too.
So it's up to, it's up to the commissioners what they want to do thereafter, because it typically doesn't worth much.
Well, at this point, since we're limited about what we can do based on, you know, Kate's question, are you, I mean, obviously, we're limited about any kind of change that you were thinking about, so are we ready to, do you have something else? I mean, is there something else we can, I mean, I'd like to kind of get back to this year's budget.
Yeah, if we can't do it this year, there's a moot point.
Bring to that, get back to the budget.
Thank you, Dale.
Okay, as of the meeting on Wednesday, where are we at with the budget for this evening? Where are we starting? Apologize for not being there.
Understandable.
Pardon me?
We understand.
We don't want you here with COVID.
With all the kindness in our hearts, we don't want you here.
Thank you, I don't want to be here right now.
Hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
So you're sort of back to the top, the beginning, so what do you think on the general?
Yeah.
Couple places we can take something off the shelf.
I think there is two. We can start at County General, Sharon, and, because I went through it today, and I found a few things, not big, but-
What page are you starting, or what?
I guess Animal Shelter Page 3.
There you go. All right, you don't care. He had decided over Dave's salary, we are not increasing his salary, right?
What'd you say, Sharon?
Only Dave's salary, the supervisor.
He didn't qualify for any of the exemptions after we read the guidance.
I've only got one to pull you right.
Like originally, we gave you a list of all the department heads to look at, to figure out a thing, but he does not-
Right, that's what I was looking at, yeah.
Yeah, no, he would just get the regular $3,000 that right now everybody else is getting.
Okay, okay. And then we would just, if he has overtime, he'll just get paid that overtime rate?
Yes, or he could accumulate comp time.
And we can take anything out of the donation pot, Jane?
Some donation money, yes, but some of the money that's donated has been given for a specific purpose, so it could only be used for the purpose that it was given.
What do you think?
Veterinary charges? $5,000?
Do we take veterinary charges out of that?
He does.
Do that. Good catch.
We're taking those charges out?
Yeah, we're taking out donations. What is, what's he seeing in donations, I'm sorry, Jane?
I'm sorry.
What's he getting donations?
68, I think.
$64,000, I have.
Are you looking at like a current list? Sorry, do you have, like, when you're saying that, are you looking at like an updated?
Well, that's why I wrote down, we're interviewing.
$63,000, yeah, $63,900.
That's only off a thousand.
Just off about $50 bucks, about.
Yeah, something that fund would certainly support some of those expenses.
Now, that $63, is some of that $63 designated, or is that what's not designated of the donations?
Well, some of it, like when people donated the money, they said they wanted specifically to go for Spain and then do during the website, so that's all that we could spend that more of, but no, there's enough of it that you could do what you're doing.
I understand that, but the 60, what I'm asking is, is that the $63,900, is some of that $63,900 designated for specific purposes, or is the $63,900 just general?
Some of it is for specific purposes.
Some of it is, oh, so that includes that specific purpose? So we don't know how much is-
Yeah, that's everything that's in that.
Okay, right.
So do we know how much of that $63,900 is designated for specific purposes?
I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay, but we have that in a account somewhere, okay?
I would think veterinary services would be one, including dog food- I would think veterinary services would be one, including dog food, cat food, would be something, I would think, like, euthanizing would not be something that would probably be in there.
And here's one thing to keep in mind, when you're looking at the animal shelter budget, as it stands right now, we have a contract with the city, and they reimburse us for half of all expenses. So whatever you leave in here, the city's gonna reimburse us for half of it.
I guess we don't want to.
So if you leave the five grand in there, the city's gonna turn around and give us half of that?
They would give us 25, yeah, I mean, if you spend.
So in that case, truck repair is probably about three, two million.
Yeah.
So we leave the five grand back here, veterinary charges.
Yeah.
Who's the director of the area plan?
I don't know.
Who's the director of area plan?
Area plan, building game? Are you moving on, are we done with animal control?
I moved on.
Okay, y'all skipped 4D, is your first page of the book, so you wanna go to the other one? Yeah, page one, page one, we skipped page one.
Yeah, yeah.
Which right now, we can't do it. Yeah, we can't, this is county general, hold, nevermind.
Moving to area plan now?
I think the only things we changed in there from what they requested was we added prices.
We could probably take the office supply line down, unless we're sending.
On this particular one, this is 4D, this is one that I told you that they pay for office supplies themselves, because we can be reimbursed as part of the 4D process.
So we don't want to cut anything in this one either, right?
I don't think so.
I had heard that we were, the building inspector, we had reduced it to 30, had discussed reducing it to 36,000 instead of 43,550.
Okay, so we're on 79 now?
Yeah. On page three, yeah.
Page three.
Yes, I had Tim the same thing that you just said, 36, is what I've got in here for that position.
Yes, we were gonna do $25 an hour for 28 hours a week, right? I think is what we decided on.
And drop the litigation to a thousand.
Yeah.
Is there something that's coming up?
That's just him anticipating something, but.
Do you have anything, Dale? Litigation for area plan commission?
He mentioned the solar, because he said no matter which way you go, he thinks there'll be a lawsuit. If you go forward, you're gonna have a lawsuit, all the people that are against it, if you're against it, other people report it.
They can even address it until January.
Right, well, just wait till it happens.
Should have been winded.
I said we just keep it, you got a thousand in there, right, Jane?
Yeah, you dropped it already.
So did we take that to a thousand, is that what you said?
Yeah, we dropped it from five to.
I think he had already dropped to 2,000.
Okay, yeah.
What's he spend on contractual services? It is really fluctuated.
25,750.
He's only asked, right?
She's looking.
Last year, it looks like we were paying Adrian, so that would have been when Bill was out, maybe because of one of his surgeries or something, we paid. Or it was after his knee surgery, I think before he was able to walk really well, we were paying Adrian to go out and do some of the inspections or something.
Yes.
So we can take it out, because he's. Back to work.
Yeah, and in other years, if I went back to '21, just like this, Bill Crawford has filled it, it's been, it's been for fill-in, but if Bill knows he's got something, he'll have to be out of the office, we have to pay somebody to cover those duties while he's gone.
We're already giving him one with another director, aren't we? Yeah, so we can get rid of it.
Did you hear Sharon, we're gonna take a question.
Yes, we're taking contractual services down.
Yeah.
Right?
That's what his new helper's gonna do.
What software is he spending a thousand on, does it GIS?
No, that's for the iWorks, so you can do permits like online.
Okay.
Page four now?
Get more ready.
You go on median expenses of 1,500 or a thousand?
Assessor.
Yes, sorry, assessor.
I know he has, so specific means he has to go to, he has to stay and keep his license or something.
Guy's been pretty conservative.
Yeah, he's always been a conservative.
It's a good job, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
10100, if I cut that one.
You went.
We're page five now, Sharon. Mike was saying to cut Jane out.
You can do it.
That'd be a bad idea.
That would be a very bad idea.
I do think that, does, if you cut the postage down though, Jane?
Um, if you look in prior years, I've always spent more than 1,500. Last year I spent 2,000, the year before that, 2,400, the year before that, 2,300, the year before that, 2,400. So actually 15's a level bound.
Well, last year on the spreadsheet you sent us, there was 2,000 left that you hadn't spent.
There might have been 2,000 in my budget, but I don't believe there was 2,000 left in postage.
Postage is down roughly $500 for what?
Let's go page six.
Go page seven.
Let's go page seven, let's keep going, please say. I looked at circuit, it's very healthy, see anything to cut there?
Nothing's already heading to cut.
So it's you, because I was very good with the budget.
I'm sorry, how far ahead have you guys been?
Circuit court.
Assistant director, did you guys take that out, receipt EMA, AJ?
Are we done with circuit court?
Yeah.
Well, we cut out circuit court, new psychic evaluation's down 10 grand, what I got.
That's what I have too.
Per diem, jurors, 65,000, well, that's nothing.
It's already in there.
Pet jury, 65,000.
If you, if you look, it's, we already got that pulled out.
I'm looking at my page, sir, I'm sorry.
You're all right, just look up here.
Okay, I got you, thank you. Move it on to page eight.
What's the county plan, 30701, EMA? What you planning for?
What account?
30701.
30701. 5,000.
That was for county planning.
We've got a.
Which wasn't, got one you'd want to say.
Well, yeah, but.
Hey, it's already out.
Yeah.
Is it already out?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's leave it out.
What was that?
Emergency notification, is that for his service? Is that that one that you guys used, the new experimental one?
Alert, sir?
No, the e-dispatches was the experimental one, and then civic was the.
Emergency notification, is that for one of the?
Is that where you're at?
Homes?
I'm sorry?
Emergency notification for EMA?
Yeah.
Is that for, like, the first responders?
I thought when he said that was.
It's a subscription-based app, is what I have written down, it's a communication, it is a subscription-based app that they have, that they're able to communicate with one another.
Yeah, that's e-dispatch.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I thought he said.
Do we leave computers in there, or do we take that out?
Uh, we took it out.
Took computers out.
If Bill's instructions.
Are we on civil defense now?
Yeah.
They took it out too long.
Assistant director, 30,000.
It's out.
Yeah, and director, 25,000.
Um, look, look up there, Bob, she's, she's got it up there.
Say if you look.
Yeah, 55,000 is what I got, it's what I got.
Well, it's 53.
Look at the screen, Bob.
I am, it's right there in front of me.
Well, the, this column right here is where the, these are the adopted amounts, so this is what, where we're at right now.
Yeah, there you go.
We didn't help out contractual services.
What's the contractual services, oh, nevermind.
We took the.
Yeah, we had taken that out already too.
Radio tower? I thought you already got that.
We need a couple trees.
Someone has to climb that tower, what I have written down, is someone has to climb the tower to maintenance and service it, and it costs about $2,000 to do that.
Ripper, you're eligible to do for nothing.
I'm getting older.
You got a bunch of ripper. I still have a question mark for county planning.
It's gone.
It's gone.
It's gone, okay.
Is it, we already took out the, what about that ADA compliant stairlift?
We had taken it out already.
Right, right, but.
We're just checking to make sure that those zeros match up a little.
I'm sorry?
We're just checking to make sure those zeros match up. We're not paying attention. I'm not.
Are we good here?
We're done with that one, right?
The, one comment I have on the, on the EMA budget, he's got the stairlift for 25,000, that's gonna introduce a whole another, go up a whole can of worms, because the rest of the, the annex building is not ADA compliant.
Right, right, that's, that's an issue that's gonna have to be addressed pretty quick though. Not just him, I'm talking to annex building in general.
Right.
Whatever you're up.
Back to commissioners, who we've already gone through, let's say, I went through clerk, I didn't see anything. We were already going through commissioners just a little while ago.
I think we even, like, on a clerk, we get some of those travel meeting logists.
Uh, I think it's government clerk still.
Well, it's like 800 and 1,000, and about 2,800, I have real.
If you look, she's spent 2,200 already this year. And she'll have at least two more conferences, because clerk's conference and a collection of conferences in December.
And she can't take out elected officials' fund?
She can for some, yeah, but not all.
So, clerk stuff. Bunch of work stuff, probably, yeah. I'd say just leave it.
Got it too.
Page 12, pull up. We also need to address part time, if I didn't say already, I'm willing, you know what I say.
Sorry?
We need to address part time too, if I didn't say that already, I don't know if I brought that up or not earlier.
You didn't yet, we've not talked about part time?
Yeah, we need to at some point.
For now, are we moving on to quarter?
Sorry?
I said for now, are we moving on to quarter?
Yeah. Can you take the pathologist on top of the pickaxe, we've already done all the first, first speed.
Yeah, we've already done that.
Did he say what the equipment he needed to buy?
It's an electric budget too.
Sharon, did you have notes on what equipment the coroner was asking for?
No, I do not, not on equipment, I have, we took him down to 94,525, because half his salary is going to be going down when he takes over completely the assistant quarter. But I don't have what he would buy, no, I don't know that he due, because he said he was due at it, and I don't know if that.
There was a four-year span, there were nothing to spend on equipment, so.
Right. No, uh, sorry, I did not, 55, 50.
What'd you say again, Sharon?
It is a 10,400.
The total equipment and supplies?
Are you talking about 404000, or 40400? That's what she's talking about, the 4,500.
That's still a good one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but no, I don't know what you're doing.
He's spent 2,547 so far.
Yeah, yeah.
The four prior years, there's nothing.
Some of that was different quarter too.
Did, um.
He already spent 2,547, so is that?
Yeah.
Take it down to two?
Yeah.
What are we taking out?
I'm suggesting maybe 2,000.
I agree with that.
If our legislative equipment's are taken out, to make it 25, is that what you're saying? Or make it two?
Make it two.
Everybody.
Equipment 40400. Down there.
2,000?
25, no, 2,000.
Then in '20, '24, he's already spent 2,547, you think we should leave it at 2,500 or 2,000?
Well, I hate to use the Bob phrase, but let him come back and ask for additional for that one.
Okay.
I mean, it's been up and down, it's been like a roller coaster with that, with that line, Adam.
Right, right.
See, doesn't, it's spent the years prior, last year 2,547, so far this year. You get a new coroner, you got new, different way of doing things, so. And that, and that, to say it, that could also change in November too, but that's not even for sure.
So I'm on page 16 now?
14, just cut that out of your thing, 14.
So micro boat, support and micro boat machine program is on two separate line items?
The support is an annual expense. The support is an annual expense and the programming, I think, they only have to come in, like, I wanna say the one's a contract, and the other one, they just do specific things, just like the once or twice of the year.
Since there's no election next year, do we need that?
Well, that's why she doesn't have the programming in there, but she has the support in there, because yes, we have to pay for the support. It's like a four-year contract.
My bad, nevermind.
Yeah, my, my, yes, on ten, uh, with zero, two, two, four, I had on the last, well, we talked about this before, that we took out the voter registration stipend.
Yeah, we, we did. I showed it, it's gone.
Okay. Okay.
Quit lodging, meetings, meetings we're taking out too?
Which one?
Lodging and meetings.
Yeah, well, she already had it on the page.
They will still have conference even in a year with no election.
She had it on her workplace too, though.
Not training for the Clerk's office, and then this would be training for the Election Board. So different people.
Yep.
Unless she took extra people this year.
You're down with this one? Any suggestions on this one?
I'm in jail.
What'd you say? Juror?
Eeler. Sorry. Uh, where we at? Jail?
I think most things that we could, we could affect are already in the jail letter, not.
Raised into how much a year, forty-three or forty-two?
Um, gave him seven thousand on all their increases.
It's made at forty-two, forty-three.
Well, there's, there's tiers. So they were at thirty-six, thirty-eight, and forty. Now they would go to.
Look at the screen, Bob.
Forty-three, forty-five. Well, there's, the, we did, the raises aren't in here. So you're not gonna see that. Basically, all of these lights should be like, the same as the year before.
I'm gonna make a note in the note column so people know this. You wanna put them out in? Just that one box?
Where are you?
Uh? Should've typed five just to watch your face.
I don't know, they're coming after me.
Are we done? Jail.
Think we're going to jail.
Zach and, uh, Chad, go ahead. Chad and Zach. Goodbye, Clem's over there.
Nothing on eighteen. Raises are mandated by state, so.
Yeah, all the ones that say probation officers, I don't, um, those are all mandated. So then for the secretaries that are in here, I just put in the three thousand, like, what we just asked for. Ready to go.
Want a prosecutor now?
She's pretty much got the same.
We own the page, clearly do.
Yeah. That wouldn't be, Michael would be taking care of her computers? Then why'd she have it?
She pays part, does she not pay part of that? Michael's pay?
Sorry?
Doesn't she pay part of Michael's cost?
Prosecutor doesn't.
She got any services or?
She got computers, yeah.
Would she handle, would Michael handle her computers?
He would.
Okay, the case, the question is why are computers in her?
I don't, I don't remember if she gave a specific reason why she had added that.
I think it's fallen on Michael to make that purchase, whatever. Was it something specific to judicials? It's judicial stuff. Computers?
Yeah, I, I just, I don't see, I don't see where she mentioned that specifically. I have no bet on it.
I don't have a bet on it either.
Michael did have a very. We take it out?
I don't know if that's what you want to do.
Because she's never asked for it before. I'm thinking she may have a specific use for it, and I would just leave it, it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Just want to eliminate the fifteen hundred?
No, I'm saying leave it there. She must have a specific need. She's not asked for it before.
Oh, we adopted it last year, she didn't use it yet.
Well, we, I mean, we gave the highway apartment money for the trucks too, they didn't use either. I mean, she could get around to it, I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that.
I don't think we discussed it with her.
You don't leave it in here?
Well, it's Michael's area of expertise. Can you buy a computer for fifteen hundred dollars these days, Mike?
Yeah, laptop. I mean, it's not an expensive laptop. It's not an expensive workstation, because he can. I feel like half that cost. But I don't, I, I mean, it's something, you leave it for right now, and then make a call and ask her, or whatever.
I'd say just leave it.
I'll text her, okay?
Just text her.
We'll come back, we'll come back, we'll come back.
We could call up a thousand for the, because that's the Commissioner's budget, office supplies, that's all I have. She's adding a first deputy for thirty-five thousand.
Well, the first deputy, the first deputy was paid through the Clerk's perpetuation fund this year. And she wants to put it back in County General.
I see why he's leaving it.
Leave it, then it comes out of, uh, County General, or leave it, then it comes out of perpetuation fund?
Leave it the way she requested it, County General.
I, I've talked to Lisa, and I understand that she's got a lot of money she needs to spend out of Clerk's perpetuation to, um,
Lisa?
You know, did I say Lisa?
You meant recorder.
Done.
No.
Oh.
You meant to say recorder perpetuation.
Oh, sorry.
Recorder perpetuation, sorry.
Uh, imagine that, the auditor corrected me. Um.
He started it.
Yeah, right. Um, I, and I understand she's got a lot of money she needs to spend over the next year or two trying to get those, um, documents taken care of, but, um, I think there's enough money in the Clerk perpetuation that she can cover that. Given, given the cost.
Well, it'll be pretty tough.
Well, it'll be, it'll be a little tight, and I don't think we do that forever.
I don't think she can.
Well, I think, I think she can, if you look at the numbers.
She told me today that that guy come in and gave her estimate, it was gonna be over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, she don't have enough money in there to do what she needs to do.
Well, I don't think she's gonna be able to get it all done in one year. Anyway, I mean, there's, there's, there's too much.
Why limit her?
Well.
To get as, as much as she can do.
To, to counsel on Peyton's point, we gotta get County General down.
But she's got files too that need to.
And, and I understand that.
That are deteriorating.
And, and those files are not gonna get done in one year.
This guy that come in to do the two hundred and fifty thousand, it's gonna be, it'll be done in a short, you know, short amount of time, and then those part-time people won't go away.
The part-time people who are currently paid in the Clerk's perpetuation.
Recorder.
Sorry, Recorder's perpetuation fund. Good lord.
You feel okay?
Yeah, not really, no.
I don't think she should, she needs to be here to talk about it because she told me today that the guy that come in said that that county was one of the worst as far as being behind.
I agree with that.
Oh, but listen, it, no doubt, she's, there's a lot to do.
It's not gonna get done here though. It will never get done here.
It won't get done.
Well, she, she hired, she hired it out. With this company, she can get it done.
It's going to, it's gonna move faster if she hires it out.
So.
And to take the money away from her from getting it done, I'm against it, but that's.
Well. We can agree to disagree on it.
Absolutely.
Hey, you need help, Scott?
Now, you could take, um, you could take the clerk, some of the Clerk's perpetuation. And take that out of her perpetuation to ease up County General.
What'd you say, Kay, or take your?
On the Clerk's perpetuation, we could pay, John could pay a person out of her Clerk's perpetuation for her office, and that would relieve County General a little bit.
Well. Let's look at the funding for Clerk's perpetuation.
I rechecked it.
Well, I have, so let me look, okay?
How much is in there?
Yeah.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. And how much is in the recorders?
Hundred and eighty.
A hundred and eight. Okay.
So how much did she get recorded for a hundred and fifty thousand?
Three times quarters, a few times a slice of clerk's.
Do you think we should take that?
Um, we, we, it's expensive here, too. We, we've always been very cautious about that. We, we've never planned it to be a long-term solution. We've done it here and there. We, we monitor it. We could choke hold on it, make sure that it's not getting out of control. Because we, you're right, we don't want to suck up all her money so she can do your contract or something. But that does need to be done.
Oh, it's gonna be done.
But I don't think, I, I agree with Scott, I don't think it's gonna get all done this year. I think it's a very ambitious goal, and we only got how many months left? We'll have for next year, sorry. Just got part of this year, contract makes it next year. Just not this year at all.
But when the money goes away, it's gone.
Right, but it, it does get filled back up slowly.
Slowly, right.
But we, that's why we have to watch it. We can do it year by year.
Yeah. I'm just saying this year, I think we should leave Lisa's alone.
Lisa's can sustain it, Clerk's can't.
The recorder, recorder, we could take one of her employees out of, or perpetuation, one of the smaller ones.
We take out every, there's still that hundred and eighty thousand.
The Recorder's perpetuation's sitting at a hundred and eighty thousand, and the Clerk's perpetuation is at fifty-three.
You wouldn't touch it.
So, so if, if, uh, I mean, they're just, it's not the same.
Well, Lisa's got, I should.
And I understand.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, and that's one quote.
So it's, it's, I'll make a motion that we take the money out of Recorder's perpetuation fund and pay them the position.
And I'll second that.
No, I'm not gonna talk, I don't wanna do without Lisa here, because it's her money.
Well, there's a motion and a second on the floor, so do a, do a roll call.
We've never, we've never done it before, Kay, never, we've done that, ever.
Recorder?
We've never done, we, we just made the decision, we do it, we've done it for a recorder. Lisa wasn't there.
She should give a sworn statement for me to do it. We can't just take it.
Okay, and if you remember Kay in the conversation that we had with her, you can choose to remove her person, and it's up to her to make that sworn statement. So if she chooses not to, she just doesn't have a person.
Say that again.
That was the conversation. You guys, if you want to, can eliminate the position here, and Kay's right. We, she, you can't make her use perpetuation without signing a form. But if she was an employee, she'll sign the form.
I think you should talk to her first, instead of just.
Well, we have talked to her. We've all, I mean, at, at least the people talking have talked to her.
But she's not here to defend, she's not here to defend herself.
Well, but, but Kay, she, she had a time, just like everybody else has, during the budget hearings to make her case.
She did say.
And we've talked to her separately. I mean, we all have. Now, you and I disagree on that, and that's okay. But Mike's made a motion, I've seconded it. Let's take a roll call, and whatever happens, happens.
Fair enough.
Okay, so we are voting then to, uh, have her pay her, uh, first deputy out of the Perp- perpetuation fund. And Mike has made a motion, Scott has seconded it, and, uh, we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Okay, Mike?
Correct?
Yes.
Rick or Peyton?
No.
Patterson?
No.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bevington?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Craneville?
Yes.
What's yours?
Lisa, Melissa. Lisa, please. It's not right, the person take it.
Well, I don't know.
We need to box him out now.
We did what we could do, and we lost, so.
We're going to, uh, Sheriff, page twenty-two.
Jane, on the sheriff, would you mind, uh, putting that note, same kind of notation in the twenty, twenty-five notes that you put in from jail regarding the raises, please?
Regarding the what?
Regarding, regarding the raises, the, the raises, you can't, I don't think you can see it, Sharon, but, um, on the, on the computer screen in front of us, the twenty, twenty-five notes, Kay had asked in the jail, um, budget if Jane would put in the notes the amount of raises given coming out of the public safety tax. Um, and what I ask is that Jane do the same thing on the sheriff's budget, okay?
Okay.
So when you come back, you'll be able to see that.
Okay.
Just so people know when they look at it.
Okay, yes, that's a good idea.
Who pays, who pays school resource officers? School resource officers, who pays them?
It's paid through the cops grant, the, school pays for thirty-five or thirty-seven thousand of it. And then the county pays for the rest out of the grant, I think. Not exactly sure how it works, but the grant administrator and Jane have got that figured out.
Is that something familiar?
Uh, Joe, we got that started when his last year was here. Until we got Robbie Fee and Aaron McQueen out at the, the school.
And those, those guys are spending a little time at elementary schools, right?
Uh, the guys at the middle school, yeah.
Okay.
We do a little time at the elementary, and then we also have, the school gave us another resource officer that goes around to the grade schools. So we got, we got most of the schools covered now, we're, we're trying.
Is there anything else we can do on this page?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think it's good. There are page twenty-three. Talking about, you know. The office manager, uh, for thirty-four thousand. We're talking about, you know, the office manager for $34,300.
I think-
And I think we have a shared staff with UD County, is that right? Am I notes right?
Yeah.
I think so, Sharon, yeah.
Because the guy that just, I can't remember his name.
Caldwell?
Yes, Mr. Caldwell, he just retired, and he was a volunteer, so now there's no one to buy recognition, there's no one in that office at this time. They cut that full-time staff in 2012, is what I have in my head.
I thought some of this was grant-funded.
The one year David Caldwell was getting money from, I wanna say it was Clean Indiana, Clean Indiana Water, maybe, it was, there was some grant that he was getting to partially pay.
And then Tara Hickory that is, she helps with that, I wonder if she could, she could probably enlighten us on a grant that might be able to pay some of that salary. I don't know, I don't know how I came up with $34,340 for an office manager. If someone had suggested that.
I've got 14.5 written down here, I don't forget what it was for.
Well, 14.5 is the total for the soil and water. I mean, I'd love to be able, we're the only county in Indiana that doesn't have a full-time person in soil and water, and I'd love to be able to do that, I just don't see where we can.
Right. And I have shared staff with UD County, so I don't know if that means that they help us out, I don't know why I have that written down.
I think that's the case, I think the office manager, I think that office manager's shared with UD County.
Okay.
Well, that part-time person.
So what will we do about that office?
I think it's a good question, I'm gonna have an answer for it tonight.
Right. Is that something we need to get with Tara at UD County and see what we can come up with?
I think so, that's what's gonna happen, huh?
Yeah, we have to.
Because we split the service, so it's a 50-50 deal with them.
Yeah.
What'd you say, Mike?
It's a 50-50 deal, like in a local agreement with them, the sheriff deposition 22, because Dale, as a justice, that's what Dave was doing, right?
Yes, yeah.
Like Scott said, we can't absorb the whole thing.
Right. I think they had something going on too, that they just get a grant that they're dealing with, that somebody's gonna have to take over. Was there something, Jane, what was that?
I do not remember.
I was thinking when Dave and Tara came in, lawyer of the year, that they had said they had gotten an agreement for something, but I don't know, I may be wrong.
Well, last year, yeah, because I remember, like, they wanted us to budget a certain amount of money, because if we spent so much, they were gonna be eligible for like a max grant or something.
That's what I was wondering.
I've not heard him saying that about that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about.
So I will try to reach out to Tara tomorrow and see if I can find out about that, will that work?
Yeah.
So we try to know what's going with that?
Can we take someone's other cost dollars, since we don't have anybody in the meantime to tell that, or can we just leave it? I believe it is 14.5. This contractual services looks like it's kinda high for what's been expanded in the past years.
See, the contractual services is where we've been paying the employee out of those contractual services. Like, they're not actually an employee of the county, are they?
Are they actually an employee of union?
They have not been treated as an employee of the county, no.
Not of Fayette County, but are they an actual employee of Union County?
They are.
Okay.
So we're paying part of that cost then?
We're just paying part of the cost.
I believe Union County has paid them as an employee, we've paid them as a contractual.
Okay.
So until you have that.
The highest we've paid him is 7,900.
See, one thing to keep in mind, unless that, this is gonna be a part-time person up there for 34, if you add that employee, you're gonna have to add minimums also, as a full-time employee.
Maybe we should leave it until we speak with Tara at UD County to see what that's about. What do you think?
I think we just leave it alone right now and move on. We've already, we've already got their full-time requests going, for right now.
Right, right.
Superior.
Which one?
Superior.
Superior, that's where I go, page 24.
Hold on.
I wanna say, right now, everything is the same except wages.
Yeah.
No, looks like we lowered lodging and meals from this 3,500 request to 1,000.
Yeah, I've got that.
And then the only other change that I had was the salaries.
Okay.
That's about where I would lower that employee there.
Yeah.
Who's the draftsman, the forensologist office?
Amy Key.
She actually been drafting?
I don't, I know she does, I know she does the GIS.
He's not a licensed surveyor, he has someone to sign for him.
If he was, there was never that, is that still available, that one, $50,000 or something we get?
No, you had to be a licensed, it was an engineer, when Warren was surveyor, he was a licensed engineer, and we got, at that time, $20,000 from the state, at this point, we can get 40, but those not-
Right, I know, I said, it was still available for the right person.
If we had an engineer, it would be, and now it's up to 40.
Okay.
Just so that I know, Mike, that program was still available.
This person isn't.
Yeah, well, this too, this is where that copier could fit in at 4,500, and the surveyor auditor, and someone else sharing that copier, Jake, that we were talking about with Michael Key.
So the one that was approved for 2024, that 6,000, that's the one that Michael's buying right now, I think he's got it on order.
Yeah.
That's not the large format one.
I don't think so, I think it's just a regular.
They haven't been used by area planning, they haven't seen walls.
I assume.
Yeah.
The treasurer?
I don't think they have any office.
The, yes, the full-time, the two full-time employees that are probably having raises in here.
Yeah, okay.
Patrol service officer, 27. I don't see those you can cut there.
You know, as a department head, and all the responsibility, I don't think he's paid accordingly.
He's not full-time.
He should be.
His job description is part-time, else we can't do that.
Are you guys, are you on 27, Joe?
Yes.
Ron's job description isn't, is it really a part-time position?
I just said it should be a full-time, that's all I said.
I think he's working on a possibly job description update with, you get a dealer or somebody? I think, I can't speak for him.
Would he be included in that rate?
He'd be a part-time.
Currently, he would not, because he's a part-time employee, and you haven't given raises to any of your part-time people.
But at the same time, he's a department head, Sharon.
The guy does a fantastic job for a fantastic group of people.
Oh, yes, he does, I totally agree, totally.
Well, credit where credit's due.
But he's gotta get his job description changed to change that, I mean, there's nothing we can do about that here. Let's see, our commissioners get that changed.
I think it's giving more money since he's a department head. Just don't ask.
Isn't that equal to the part-time rate?
He's a PAT, so his part-time rate is a higher rate than other part-timers.
So we will address that here tonight, I hope. Maybe just part-time county general.
He's a department head.
We can't change the job classification.
25, 26,000 positions is our own position to go with that, aim to title it the same way. So we gotta be careful.
I don't know what we, obviously, can't do anything right here, but I think it does need to be looked at and discussed.
Yeah, right, and I've talked to commissioners and him, and his updates and stuff, I've told Ron, you know, for many hours, talk about my stuff to myself, and he does a good job, he knows the stuff, he knows what I'm like, that's all I wanna do to himself, I said, no, Ron Stevens has said what he's done, as he does, is it new stuff that I wouldn't know? But he says something we can fix tonight.
I have a note here, he's asking for 29.5, is that right?
Yeah, that's what he asked for.
Why not 26 or 27?
Well, under his current classification, it's that 20-some-like thousand is based on an hourly rate, okay, because he's not a full-time employee, and so we haven't addressed part-time employees at all regarding raises. So, and clearly, part-time folks need a raise, so-
How much, that's the question.
Well, that's, and, right, that's the question, but compared to other part-time employees, what Jane was saying is that he is considered a professional staff part-time person, so he gets paid a little bit more than someone who's not in that classification.
29.5 would be a line you'd-
I think he needs his own classification since he's in it.
Anybody that's classified the same as Ron would get that same increase.
Right.
So we should be careful, so I would just propose to the reset of a five-minute recess, and discuss part-time when we come back.
So will that remain the way it is?
For right now, there's really not that we can do about that, because we gotta make sure all our boxes are checked. You know, does it impact, are there any other positions that are classified the same way? You know, then we would address it in our part-time discussion, because we have to address that tonight before we go off. I just say propose a five-minute recess, because I need one, and, all right, we'll part-time when we come back.
Sharon?
Okay, yes, it is 6:26, let's turn back at 6:35.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the last thing that we talked about was on the veterans, and is Dale going to talk to him about getting that job description changed, so he can-
He's not in a room at the moment.
I don't think that's, is there any position to talk about that right now?
Right, right, I'm just saying, that's the deal that I put down.
Dale Monson, are you in a position to talk about changing the job description to veteran service officer?
Not at this time. It's worth looking at, but we haven't sat down to talk about it yet.
So you guys go sit down and talk about it?
Probably, we have, yeah, but probably.
I thought he was putting something together.
Okay, then we'll move on to-
Part-time?
Well, that's the end of county general, Sharon, do you want to address part-time tonight?
What else do we have to do?
Well, part-time's really the big three hit.
We didn't budget first.
Where we at, Jane, as far as the number?
Right now, county general at 9.6 million.
We've not moved.
Not much. Just quite a little bit.
We were half a million over last year.
Well, each year, you're gonna, this is how we got to 9.6, is because each year, you will go up a little bit. When we first got in the office, we were significantly less than 9 million, I don't know what was when Jane came in.
We got 9.1 last year, we'll be at 8.6. We didn't get there.
Okay, so-
All the growth you gotta look at is pay raises.
Do you want to continue on the budget, or do we want to discuss part-time employees? You go ahead and finish that.
That was part of it, Mike, we cut the pay raises, eliminated some, but you can't go that way forever.
So do you want to do the part-time?
Yeah, sure.
Do you want to continue on the budget?
That's a good idea, Sharon.
I'd like to see something comparable to Walmart, at least.
You'd like what?
See a part-time, at least get something comparable to Walmart.
What are they?
They're gonna be 14 or 15. I'm just throwing it out there.
Right now, your office part-timers make 1240, and then your, like, let's say the custodial staff, that type of employee makes 1284 an hour.
How much?
1284 an hour. An hour, what'd you say?
That's-
And then your clerical people make 1240.
14 or 15.
And that's part-time?
Yes. I mean, that would be the starting wage, I mean, like, somebody that's been here longer would make more than that, but I'm saying-
How many part-time are we looking at, Jane, you have an idea? How many part-time employees?
Right now, if we're talking county general, less than 10, probably.
Less than 10?
In county general.
Countywide, what do we, we're gonna-
50.
So if we did what I suggest, just throw out there, for just to start with, that's $2 an employee. Plus whatever other consularly prizes they get. I'm not saying that's the number, Jane, so I have a fit to kill me.
It's a good number.
So maybe the, so that would move to fourteen-forty and...
I'm just saying, Scott.
Fourteen-eighty-four.
Somebody's gotta throw something out there. It's pretty sad when, when these, when we, when I go to Walmart, and I'll see county employees working at Walmart and working here. Just to make ends meet.
That is sad.
And I know we're not, we're, we don't, we're not gonna ever be comparable to a private business. I get that. But it's sadening to see these people have to work extra jobs. Just to, just to put food on the table for their kids and their families.
Mike, I'm not arguing with you, but if you're working there regardless of where we put it here, probably, I mean, we can do fifteen dollars an hour, they're still gonna be going to Walmart.
Well, probably.
Yeah, you know.
But, but, but it helps, you know, a little, takes a little...
Sure, I understand, Mike.
I mean, I'm, this is, the floor's open to anybody to make a suggestion. It's not just me. So if you've got a better idea, throw it out there. Eighteen bucks an hour. Just got a coordinator over there.
Two dollars an hour?
Sorry?
Two dollars an hour for part-time employees are raised?
That's what I'm throwing out there. Whether those numbers work or not, I haven't looked at them, but I'm just saying, hey, this is Mike's, Mike's thought. You guys can see your nuts go good fat.
And looking at thirty to forty part-time people countywide?
Jim? You're too quiet, you're too quiet through this whole thing. You better be quiet.
I'm just listening to everybody else talk.
You for it?
Huh?
You for it?
Jim, that's fine, we're for it. Yeah, give up.
Scott, I know you're not for it, so what's your thought?
No, I didn't say I wasn't for it. I'm, I'm doing the math.
Okay.
Okay.
One of us here at least is doing the math.
Your fingers aren't moving fast enough, Scott.
Yeah, tell me about it.
Hey, the guy's, he's doing, he's doing his best to be here.
And how many overall employees are in there, Jane, did you say?
And we have like, two hundred employees, and I wanna say maybe fifty of them are part-time?
Total. Total, and less than ten at county general.
There's, there's not that many in county generals.
So, so altogether, the extra increase, all the way across the board, would be small on county general. But overall, it's about a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. A little under a hundred-and-seventy-five, right? So fifty employees...
At what rate per hour?
An extra two dollars an hour.
Fourteen-fifty-four, something like that.
Well, it, I'm just going by extra, right?
Yeah.
So, um, and it's, now, but that, I'm basing that on thirty-three and a half hours a week, and these people don't work thirty-three and a half hours.
Twenty-eight or something like that.
Twenty-four, twenty-eight, right?
Yeah, normally.
Yeah, I mean, up to twenty-eight.
Up to twenty-eight, okay.
Should've figured twenty-eight.
So you need to figure twenty-eight, sorry.
Jane, how much does the, the three-thousand-dollar raise turn out an hour, at hour?
On what, on full-time?
Full-time.
Okay, for your people that work the thirty-three and a half hours?
Yeah.
It's a dollar-seventy-two. And for your people that work eighty hours, it is a dollar-forty-four.
That's just straight salary. They get the benefit too, they get the benefits too, right, on the full-time employees?
Yes.
And the part-time don't. So, that would make, it still makes sense to have the hourly be a little higher for the part-time. Because they're not getting the other benefits that the full-time is getting.
Right. So you what, these workers...
You said that backwards, full-time's getting less than the part-time.
No, 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 because the full-time get, get the, the, like, the other benefits.
I know that, I was saying the rate.
Yes, I understand that the rate is less.
That's what I was...
But it, it makes sense, given that the full-time people get benefits and the part-time people don't. So it would make sense to have full, I mean, if you want, if you were looking for fairness there, it would make sense to be a little higher.
I was just looking for the rates, is all.
Okay, so twenty-eight. I'm trying, your, your visit, remember, during the code nineteen, what was the rule, any employee that worked over twenty-eight hours? Something that came out with a rule and had higher taxes and something? So that would be... I wonder if it's still in place?
What's still in place?
The twenty-eight hour limit per week.
Bob's spinning the yarn, leave me.
Um, I, I would doubt it. Uh, so that'd be a little under a hundred-and-fifty thousand at two dollars an hour, countywide. Like you said, it'd be a little under a hundred-and-fifty thousand at two dollars an hour, countywide. But as Jane said, we're talking about less than ten of the fifty being part of county general.
Right.
So, let's just say it's ten of those, um...
And now it's just a yes, don't hold me to that, because if there's eleven people, I do not want to be harassed.
Well, I'm, we're, we're just batting things around right now.
Well, you always throw that disclaimer in there, Jane. Don't hold me to it.
It, it affects, it, you know, based on her ten number, it would affect us about thirty thousand dollars in, in county general. Thirty of the hundred-and-fifty. Hundred-and-forty, I think it came to one point of six. So instead of nine-point-six-three-six, we'd be at nine-point-six-nine-six. Approximately.
So how many, how many people are in the same class, category as Ron?
No, nine-point-six-six-six.
There are no other PAT part-time?
Okay, so we could address that separately as well. Correct? Some of us actually disagree, it's just agreeable.
No, I'm saying you can do what you, it's your game. Play it however you want to.
What did Bob ask for?
He asked for...
So is anywhere near another number besides two dollars an hour? Is that comparable to other part-time positions? Does anybody know that?
Well, Google's twelve. I don't know which one some works there.
You can Google it.
Google it.
Google average part-time salary in Colorado.
Jane, according to this, we're about three million dollars under budget for last year here for this year, is that right?
Sorry?
We're about three million dollars under our budget for this year, nine-one, or sixteen, or something like that.
And we're at ninety-six. So we're half a million or...
I was talking about what we have spent this year compared to our budget for this year. Our budget was nine-one, we've spent six point... We still got a quarter, or a third of the year to go, yes.
Okay, that's a hole this year for county general.
I don't think we have a choice.
We've got thirty-five percent of the budget unseated.
I think it is. I think it's fair.
So we're gonna stay within the budget, probably, but at the end of the year, we'll be the job. We have any kind of assistance from the part-time, should we bring it in, call taxes? I don't want to overwork you, Jane, but we don't have it, that's fine.
Help them, and help keep them as long as...
Two bucks is fair, isn't it?
What I, I just Googled it, it's anywhere from, uh, thirteen to eighteen. And that's not the numbers though, that's just average.
And this, this would put starting around fourteen and change here?
Yes, it'd be, uh, fourteen-forty and fourteen-eighty-four.
Jan Tral would make almost fifteen, and the other classification would make, is fourteen, there's thirty-six?
I think she said that we'd go from, uh, like, clerical would go from twelve-forty to fourteen-forty under that idea. And then there was another starting at twelve-eighty-four, so that puts it almost, like you said, almost fifteen.
Poverty paid.
I think you need to address the veteran service officer as well, because he'd be making, what's his average per hour?
Seventeen-seventy-four.
How much?
Seventeen-seventy-four.
Part-time deal officers?
No, seventeen-seventy-four and so...
So you do the same for him?
Veteran services officer, like, right.
You did assist him?
I agree.
I know there's people that think he's grumpy and gruff and so forth and so on, but I also understand the military background, the senior NCO, they're, they're supposed to be wired that way. You know, that's, that's the military, you know, come out, you know, and, and plus, he's been through stuff and dirt, dirt things, is the reason why he's a da-dah, a dog. And he's been, worked with me on certain veteran items. He's very knowledgeable and helpful to get me through, not to get me through like difficult, just found paperwork and so forth, just, just the ins and outs of the VA. Oh, I said, oh, we can do it, we can do it. I looked at him and I said, we can't do it. I said, I went through this X amount of years ago, I was in the Marine Corps. We can't do it, there's a jungle out there. You, you've got to get someone that knows what they're doing, so the guy do it through there. He does it. His approach not, may not be tactful or, or what we would like, or a bright, shiny smile on his face.
He's a soldier.
He's Tim. He's a soldier.
You know, the, the, the personnel issues, any, any kind of personnel issues are, are commissioner-related. As far as his, his pay goes, he is still administratively considered a part-time employee.
He's in his classification by himself.
Right, but he also, he's already making seventeen something.
He's already making more than most part-time employees, now...
But you can't, can you find somebody to come in and do that job he does off the street?
No, of course you can't. No.
Well, we have found it.
But, but again, he's being paid administratively what he's classified right now. Now, if that changes, then we deal with it then. But until, until that time comes, I, you know, I don't have any problem in giving him the same increase we're doing the other part-time employees. And, and I don't disagree. I think Ron does, does fine at this job. So, and that would put him at nineteen-seventy-four an hour.
One thing too, that Ron does that these other part-time people do, he donates a lot of his own income to service these veterans when they need.
And, and that's great.
Needs traveling.
I know it's great, but I mean, it needs, it may need a little financial recognition.
He's gotta, he's gotta get that changed, work on it.
Right, if that, that's what he does.
Not his job description.
The job description change. Because I think Ron, I, I'm still, I mean, I'm like everybody else, I think he does a fantastic job.
They're gonna have to, because the commissioners set the job description wrong.
And that's true, but right now, until that gets done, we have to deal with what's here.
It can put us in legal jeopardy though, until it fits the job description.
Well, and, but again, that's a commissioner issue. Commissioners have to handle that.
So what you're saying, Scott, we can or we can't?
We can't fix all of the, the problems.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I think you give him the same increase you're talking about for the other part-time employees.
That's what I'm...
And yet, you know, and that puts him at nineteen-seventy-four.
That's what I was asking.
Is there any other part-time employees that are department heads?
Well, we can't make it fifty dollars, okay?
I'll make a motion and I increase part-time to two dollars, two, by two dollars, or all part-time positions, including department position.
I second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dave? It's so good.
We didn't hear a gavel.
What's gavel?
Okay.
I don't, okay, thank you, Bob.
That's the least I could do, Sharon.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there something else on our agenda, uh, Jane, that we need, that we need to do right this minute, or do we want to just go on with the budget now?
Um, like, look at the non-county general, the rest of it, you mean?
Yes, yes. Are we, are, are we good with that?
How are we a part-time to look at?
I'm trying to go in and increase all of your lines for the part-time that you just did, so you can see what that looks like.
Yeah.
And I second. I'm not sure about that.
Dale, we were just talking about, your raises are part-time and to, uh, get a job description set up for Ron. Are, are you gonna get with him to do that?
Well, he already has a job description.
Well, he's outside his job description right now, the things he's doing, needs to be adjusted or else.
I think he does do some things that we do not require him to do.
Yeah, exactly.
I, as I said earlier, I think that he's working on that, he's, this plan there to get with you. Because I think he, I think you guys, it needs to be immediate minds to get current, whatever VA is requesting. For example, disabled vets, you know, the van. And what do we have to do to get the van for transportation for, that other people can use to drive vets back and forth to, or volunteers, to their appointments? And I think we need to work with Ron and, and help him, because he is, he's willing to do things, he's very knowledgeable. He's willing to do things. I thought you just said this.
You did.
Dale, why you can't believe him?
He, he has a, a genuine passion for his job.
He does, Sharon. He's very committed to it, very dedicated to it.
Yes.
But I also understand that we can't have him on the county too, because that, that same dedication and passion, other veterans need as well. And they're not entitled, they're not privy to it if he's, if he's gone taking vets to different places.
Yeah.
I understand maybe there's a vet that, that feels more comfortable with him going along, because he does know the ins and outs, he does know who to talk to.
Well...
But we need to, that needs to be on paper, like you said, so it's not, not on the title, what you currently have is a job description. And what he and his mind thinks should be the job description.
Well, I'll tell you what, we, we can job describe him into a full-time position with deputies, if that's what you want to find. We can do anything job description. So how much money do you want to spend on it?
Well, here's, here's the thing. I, I think the, the feeling right now is, you guys, you guys talk about this issue, because right now, for this particular budget, we'd like to be able to do more, but because he's considered part-time, um, there's a feeling that, you know, we really can't get beyond... um, there's a feeling that, you know, we really can't get beyond that part of it. And there's some, there's some issues right now of doing more than what the job description says. And there's a feeling, I know there's a feeling on his part, that there, there should be things in a job description that aren't. And all that really needs to be worked out with you guys. That's not really our issue and it certainly isn't our issue tonight. And I think that's what they're just trying to communicate, to have a conversation with and see, see what's worked out.
Well, we had to remember, he's limited by the VA on some things he can do too.
Well, and, and that, and that's fine, but again, that's a commissioner issue with, with veteran service office. And not for us tonight.
Dale, they were saying that we want to do, make a full-time, they're starting to say, I don't know when the job description was last updated. If it was the sixties or seventies or eighties, it clearly gives you updates, even the nineties. I'm just saying, it's his job, I think, to initiate the conversation.
It was updated in twenty-eleven.
I'm sorry?
It was updated in twenty-eleven.
That's, that's pretty old.
And it was reviewed before he was hired.
Well, I guess what he wants, and what he, what he in his mind feels the veterans VA require, is requiring of him, let's get some eyeballs on it and make sure that it's either he's right or he's wrong and work with him and explain it to, you know? That's all I'm saying.
Well, I, I expect to hear from him on this subject in the near future, cause I know he's been talking about it. And certainly, no decisions have been made so far and nothing has been discounted, you know? So trouble with, trouble with that position is typically commissioners do not immediately supervise the VSO. They're, they're left to do their thing. And we have, you know, the type of service we get from our VSO depends on the individual. And, and Ron is, is excellent at his job. We've had others that would, would never measure up to his standards. So a, a job description that would fit Ron, wouldn't fit other people for sure.
Well, I mean, he should be the best part that if, if he goes and moves on to something else, they have to measure up to. Cause we're all, we're all saying he does a good job, so. Um, let's, so I'm not gonna tell you what to do. You're commissioner, you know your job better than I do. I'm just gonna say, let's just all be, have your ears open to, when I say all, to commissioners and Ron. Everybody else is a part of that conversation. It's what he's saying and does it make sense? Does it not make sense? And explain to me if maybe it doesn't make sense, because we're currently, if he's taking people there, I believe he's not covered under our insurance, so if he wrecks, whoever's served with him is, would not be covered.
I think that's right. Well, I know, well, it hasn't been all that many years ago that we re-employed a full-time secretary to, to assist the VSO. And I don't remember the exact year that ended. I think that ended before, before my time here. I don't remember for sure, the, till the eighteen hundreds. It was before the war of eighteen twelve, I think.
Between then and the Civil War, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So are we ready to press on?
Yes. Let's go to adult probation, page twenty-eight. What is the three oh nine oh one, uh, reimbursed salaries to county general Jay? What is that?
She gives so, I'm sorry, the probation departments give so much money back to county general to cover probation officer fees, or to contribute toward probation officer fees.
Excuse me, sorry.
They're giving us money.
Yeah. So it's like in that particular line, she, I'm sorry, I didn't wanna say she, uh, they eliminated the five thousand from adult probation circuit, but they moved it over here. If you look at the three oh nine oh one line in adult probation superior, they increased it by five. So they will still be getting the same amount for salaries from probation fees. They just moved it from circuits to superior.
Okay. All ready?
Are you moving on?
Thirty?
Nothing on the cemetery.
So are we looking at anything else? Are we ready to go to cemetery?
Go to cemetery.
I don't know what you can do there.
What perpetuation? On page thirty-one.
We added thirty-five hundred to the part-time. It's at ten one ninety-two now.
Yeah.
Why did it jump up? Ten one ninety-two?
Yeah.
So she was being that opportunity to be the one, they would just get the two dollar for an hour raise, right?
Yes. She would have just gotten a raise, yes.
So we only looking at paying five thousand?
Yeah.
Twenty thousand. But they raised it four thousand dollars.
Moving on yet?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm done. Yeah, I think, I think he's good.
Perpetuation and then there was can you be drug free, which.
Perpetuation, there's nothing to do there.
Yeah.
At you right here.
Which page? Page thirty.
Thirty-five.
We didn't wanna pay him a hundred thousand, but we always have given maybe, we'll do that Scott.
We moved that out of this budget request to another budget request.
Yeah, it was, it was moved to a new one.
What'd you say Sharon?
I don't know. I heard you guys talking. I couldn't understand.
I was, I was just explaining something to Bob.
Okay. I go to page thirty-four. Where are you guys at?
I'm on thirty-six.
Three five.
Thirty-five. Yeah, we, we were just looking at thirty-five, the county share of economic development.
Okay.
And then get ready to go to courthouse lease debt.
Cut it.
Okay.
Going to full two.
Which there's nothing. That's based on how much our payment is.
Oh, here's ADG. About thirty thousand.
Any comments on this?
I don't know if they. Ten thousand overtime added to it. Ten three sixty for forty-nine oh three.
Now, this particular budget, we've already approved as much as we requested, so if I change that part-time line to, because you guys increased the part-time rate, um, I'll have to, I'll have to take something else out of somewhere else.
Which one?
Are you on page, what page you on? Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven, yeah. Courthouse operating.
Okay, yeah.
We can do, but.
It's rolled by how much?
Like seven thousand.
We could take, we could dump that property purchase land down.
I'd probably take that building grounds and maintenance. Cause we've never, we've never gone to seventy, because it's sixty-six four last year, they've only twenty-four.
Oh, those are employees, the buildings and grounds maintenance.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, we'll check that. Get that done.
I mean, part of it, if Josh could ever get people hired that would stay and work.
About maintenance.
We could drop the purchase land down.
Yeah. You planning to purchase any land Dale?
Um, that's always possible.
If you don't have anything in mind.
Yes.
Guess what? You get cut.
We're gonna have to open that.
You get cut.
Well, why don't you have, uh, if seven thousand is all you need, why don't you take that out of utilities?
Do you think that could sustain it or can we take part out of, like take five out of land purchase and two out of maintenance utilities?
Well, do whatever you wanna do.
Well, I, you know something about property, you just can't talk about it, fine. Just, just say yesterday, you've, you've got something in mind.
Okay.
If you, if you think it's consistent, that's fine then. I'm, I'm, okay, yeah. I think we can. Take the seven out of utilities. Thank you. I know sometimes you gotta be sneaky quiet.
There are some things I just can't talk about and I'm not gonna commit.
I understand.
What is the renovation lease?
That's the part of the courthouse payment.
Okay.
Like some of it, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand will come out of courthouse lease or the debt line, and then the other hundred and sixty comes out of this line.
You have thirty-nine?
Skip thirty-eight, go over there down.
Two thirty.
Skip thirty-nine.
Around that forty.
Skip forty.
Building construction, um, changes with the women's work release, assuming?
Okay. Are you still at the courthouse operating?
No. He's gone to QM jail.
Page forty-one.
Super secret stuff you can't talk about.
Whiskers down all the other ways.
Uh, QM building jail, ten thousand dollars for building construction. What's in?
QM building.
Jail. Forty-one.
Okay. I was on page thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Forty-one.
I wish we were.
Okay, what's, what's the line you're talking about there?
The last one.
Building construction.
Oh.
Does that tie in with, with the women's work release stuff?
No. That's not women's work release. Do you remember that Dale, we was talking to, Josh, I think it's something to do about the roof.
That was back here in the annex.
Well, the jail roof has its problems too. You've got, uh, some roof drains that are heavy in the places they shouldn't.
Need to be resealed or something?
I think so.
I bet you the whole roof would shut.
Well, that wouldn't be a whole roof. Dale, do you remember why we put that ten thousand in there?
No, it's not my head, no. I was thinking it had something to do with the roof, but I was thinking, you don't want to end up with old salary. I thought it was the one that did my mind, but I don't know if I remember.
Well, telling you the truth, I've slept since then Mike.
And you don't actually write this down anywhere?
Well, we don't really, certainly.
Yeah, I've got a whole pile of it in there in the office. That's the reason I write that down, so I don't have to remember.
I have forty-nine thousand six fifty for the annex building. That's for that roof too, isn't it?
Which page are you on now?
Page eleven on your courthouse bud, on your budget.
Page eleven.
We're not on that page.
I know, but he's talking about a roof for the annex and a roof for the jail. We've got it in here for the annex. We're, we're down.
But the debt can't go under jail Bob.
That's two different buildings.
I know they are.
Two different funds.
The, the annex is where it needs to be under, in the county general budget for the commissioners. Jail, the annex building cannot go in the jail, because it's just for specific jail needs and maintenance upkeep. You follow me?
Yes, but I'm questioning, did we approve for the annex and the jail both already? I mean, are we gonna get both? I guess both roofs need fixed, right?
Well, sure, yeah.
I mean, you're gonna fix the one, you're gonna fix the other one.
Well, you would, you would think so, Bob. It's all about money.
Come, come back in two years and see us after we. So you've got seventy thousand for the jail and you're needing the other seventy thousand basically for the annex too.
Yeah, and we, we really, we can't.
Fifty thousand.
We can't lean on that QM building jail fund very much, because it does, the levy is so small, it, it doesn't accumulate probably anything. It's just a very small levy and just brings in this a little babylonic. The only way to, the only way you can increase that levy is if the experience of a levy for another. That kind of, I don't think you're more buying with that.
No. Okay.
So if we don't know what the ten thousand dollar building fund is, or the building construction is, can we take it off or leave it on?
I'm gonna say leave it, cause I'm gonna imagine there's, there's stuff to do renovation wise. And we already know there's cost overruns with this women's work release, I'm for sure. Um, leave it there. Again, this is under the control of the commissioners. You got, the guy invented a copper wire over your Dale for a penny.
Hold on a minute Mike. I think I just remembered. I think I just remembered why we put that in there. Dale, do you remember our discussion about the, uh, control room floor?
I was gonna say, I don't know if you wanna talk about it.
I think that is it. And, and Zach, we have found a supplier or didn't Tim Patterson find the supplier that was able to?
Tim found the supplier and we got a sample and it works and, and I got quotes, so. Let me see if I find it. Let me see if I find it here.
Thank you, Jim.
Citizens of Pecan County, block.
Okay, so we're good with the Kium building jail?
Seventy-seven hundred dollars.
Seventy-seven hundred. Mike, I'm slow, but I'm, eventually I'll remember stuff, but I'm, I'm sure that was the reason we put that in there.
I thought that was a bad way, I don't wanna bring it up, because I know you like to keep stuffs. So I, and I, so I didn't wanna bring that up.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking in the back of my head.
Well...
Because I know that Tim had a discussion with you about that, and I thought that you guys were working on that, so I thought that told you before, so.
Well...
Good.
Okay, so we're good with this page, forty-one?
Yeah.
This is the one, it says mainly Michael, Michael King's page.
Yeah, most of that is Michael King's request.
So what's remodeling cost, then? Is that for women's work release?
No. No, it's not. Um, that line was, any work we would need to be done around the courthouse area, you know, and there's always a list of things. Give you an example of some of the things we've done out of that line is, we've built a, had a wall built in the prosecutor's office, with a service window, which they didn't have before, I know that the, I think the auditor's office had a request in for a, um, small, little wall in their office. It's just, it's just to have something available for projects around the courthouse that seem to fit that category, and if we don't have a project, it will get spent.
Such as the carpet, which we also, we're adding in the auditor's office?
Yeah.
The metal scanner?
Yeah.
The wall, insulation?
Sure.
We're covered there.
Um, and I'll give you another good example, where something like that could go, it could go to put tile floor down upstairs and get rid of that nasty carpet up there, because I don't know why in the world they ever put carpet on the floor upstairs.
In the main area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the main corridors.
You got about almost nine hundred thousand dollars.
Man, there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the fund, and nothing has been spent this year, and all that stuff needs to be done, why haven't we done it?
Uh-oh. So I get that book in, I'll go over there.
Um...
It was obvious.
I'm just saying, I mean, we got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we've been talking about it, we're not spending it, um, I mean, and all that stuff needs to be done, and we have spent zero in twenty-four. So, I'm just asking the question.
Well, I will admit, Sharon, that, to being frugal.
But it needs fixed, Dale.
If it needs, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, frugal is good, I'm, I'm all about being frugal, but when that stuff needs to be done, and people are complaining, and you have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to spend, it's in the budget, I mean, people are complaining daily.
Sharon, there's nine hundred thousand dollars sitting in that fund.
What are they complaining about to you, Sharon?
Uh, everything you guys have been talking about, I mean, just, you know, things that need to be repaired, things that need to be atten, attentive to, I mean, it's, no, I can't sit here and give you specifics. Well, I can, but I mean, you just hit every one of them, and I, I, I mean, I'm just asking, I'm not trying to be contradictory, I'm just saying, you know, if we have that money in there, this one needs to be done, I mean, we need to start doing the work.
We got a hundred and ninety thousand dollars sitting there, using building construction, remodeling.
There's the balance.
Almost two hundred thousand dollars sitting there for various construction projects.
And that's all there is.
Are we gonna leave the hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there and, and do something, or should we just take it out?
Again, I don't see the harm in leaving it there, you, we're talking about Dale, the, now I won't forget the other commissioners, they're not a part of the process, it's not like Dale decides everything on his own, but I know that it's not gonna be wasted on something, so I don't necessarily have a problem, if it's not hurting us, I have a problem leaving it there, because, um, you know, maybe they, they do get to it this year, you know, with Josh's extra guys, whatever, who knows? So I would, I don't see the harm there, again, that's my opinion.
Actually, leave it there and get the work done.
Ditto. That's a ditto.
If you don't, Dale, it's gonna be grounded.
I hate that.
Well, I'm not trying to be a bad, I know, because I'm just saying, like, we have all this stuff that needs to get done, let's do it.
I agree.
Would that fit in that metal detector? And put someone at the front door?
The money's there for it, I mean, the commissioner's the only answer to that, I mean, the money's there for it, so...
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, to me, that's a deed.
Yep.
So if they come to a council meeting, they have to put additional appropriation for, to install the jail, the metal detector stuff, you can slap them down.
So we're leaving it in there?
Council?
Yeah, it's going on. Nothing there.
You missed the part.
Health department we did today. Highway forty-five. Highway forty-five.
They hiring people, Dale?
I don't, I don't think he heard you, Sharon. What was your question?
Is he hiring people?
There's four people that's retiring, is the county gonna be hiring four people for the highway department?
I don't think so.
Oh, you don't? Okay. Okay.
Can we?
Go to page forty-six, man.
Take off his office equipment, put the eleven thirty-eight? Or just take it out entirely? Something, his office equipment, I'm assuming it's computers or something like that?
You're talking for Jay?
Yes.
Wait a minute, which, which page are you on?
Oh, I'm trying to confuse him, I've succeeded.
Yeah, yeah, page forty-five, I think.
Forty-five, I was looking at the last line, I had a four oh four oh one, office equipment, I'm, I don't know if it's, if it's, if it's computer or cop or anything, if we're, if we're...
It's not, it would be, um, I know, like, in the last couple of years, they bought a new desk, they bought hiring cabinets, I mean, it's, it's, it truly is office equipment.
Right.
Thanks, Ben.
You kind of went to the...
Who went to the Lucille's?
What'd you say, Sharon?
Uh, um, the two thousand, they spent two hundred ninety-nine dollars thus far.
Yeah, like, this year, today, it's two ninety-nine.
They have a line that has little...
When you turn your head, Sharon, it cuts off or something.
You go to your past.
Sorry, I'm trying to read my book, and, sorry about that.
Twenty twenty-two, there's sixteen forty.
They have, uh, on that line, two zero one hundred, they have office supplies of fifteen hundred, and then on line four zero four zero one, they have office equipment for two thousand, that'd be thirty-five hundred dollars. And they spent a new load in office supplies this year.
So, Dale, didn't you say that it's in your budget, on the general, county general? Have you got office supplies there?
That's only for county general, the county general offices.
Okay.
Like, all, all other funds, it's self-supported.
Okay, thank you.
They're asking for fifteen hundred, and they haven't spent any this year, and they only spent four hundred and forty-eight and twenty-three. And then... And the office equipment, they're asking for two thousand, and they've only spent two ninety, two hundred ninety-nine dollars, so that's thirty-five hundred dollars, and they've spent two hundred ninety-nine.
All that's your padding, you know, re, leave a line item in there.
Sharon, could I explain something there on this highway budget?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, first of all, Jay Havlin, uh, turned this budget request in, we commissioners did not have anything really to do with it, but toward the end of the year, and especially toward the end of paving season, paving and chip seal season, uh, that department has an awful time complying with the restricted versus unrestricted funds, and every year, the little dabble money from various line items has to be moved back and forth in order to keep us in compliance, and it has really been a headache, so as long as our budget requests for the highway do not exceed what our income and fund balances would be, uh, they certainly do need that latitude in order to make things balance at the end of the year. Does that make any sense to you?
Yeah, yes.
And that's why, there, you know, I'm sure there's a request here, you know, two thousand dollars for computers or whatever, may or may not get spent for a computer, but it will no doubt get spent at the end of the day to where we fell short, you know, right?
She's saying this basically, leave it alone, so they can have the freedom to...
Transfer if they need to.
Transfer, not come back for additional appropriation, just do a transfer request.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that.
But they, I'll tell you, one thing that really frustrates me to no end at the highway department, is when the, when the state came out with that stupid rule, on you gotta document spending half your money this way and the other half that way, has been nothing but a hindrance in running that department ever since it's been there. Uh, it's, it's going to, it's time where it's probably gonna cost probably three positions down there. This is certainly one case where we would be better off if the state would just mind their own business.
Okay, so do we want to move on to page forty-six, then? Are you guys paying your loan?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's your current balance, Jane?
Sorry?
The eleven seventy-six, highway general.
No, no, what was your question?
Current balance.
Current balance, they said they're hurting.
The fund, sorry, fifty-five thousand. They're hurting.
Sixty-five thousand.
Now, we put back in, uh, well, the contractual volunteer for our department, right?
Yes, I believe so, but I'll go down and check there in a second.
Yes.
What was the beginning balance?
Yeah, it's there, fifty. I'm sorry.
Mike, would you ask any questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to see where we need to be, because they're requesting one point three million, and if I'm looking at this right on the screen here, it says unexpendable balance, one point five. So it's...
There's the sub-fund.
Okay.
Like, part of what is being budgeted in eleven seventy-six can be paid from eleven seventy-three if it's a qualifying expense.
This was eleven seventy-three?
That's, that's, that's got a million. It's not a budget, it's, it's budgeted through eleven seventy-six, it's not its own, it's not its own fund, it's a sub-fund.
Okay.
Eleven seventy-three's got a million dollars in it.
So what qualifies for eleven seventy-three?
Has to be construction, reconstruction, or preservation, so basically, paving, it's the biggest thing that counts.
Maintenance?
No, maintenance does not count.
Excuse me?
Hot hole catching doesn't count, chip sealing doesn't count, brush cutting doesn't count.
Paving and eleven seventy-three, what else can you do out of it?
So that's about it, Dale, what else can be done out of there besides paving?
Well...
I mean, I think, like, um, what...
Which chip seal materials qualify? Uh, like, you know, oil and gravel, um, colored pans.
So preservation has, has nothing to do with equipment, like trucks or... Some regular maintenance to preserve life of the vehicle?
No.
It's strictly for rural infrastructure?
Yes, infrastructure only.
Okay, there's nothing in here that, that is related to that, in eleven seventy-six? I don't see anything that qualifies for that.
It's just an old...
See, mainly, if you look at, like, what we, we paid out there, it has mainly been, um, it's personnel expenses, when they're doing qualified type of work, is mainly what's coming out there, or like, if contractual services is, um, if we're paying, for like, when we get the community cross-exes grant from the state, and then we have to pay about the pyramid, like, that other contractual services, that will come out of there, because when... that will come out of there because when they're doing that project, it's a qualifying project. So like our grant match can come out of there for the million dollar grant that we get. That's what the, like the $169,000 used grant match, it qualifies.
And our grant match has gone up this year too because the the maximum allowed community crossings grant has gone from $1 million to 1.5 million. So that is more money on the table, but it increases our match. And, you know, I'm not complaining about that because the community crossings projects are a good deal. It's just all the strings that's attached to highway funds is what makes me crazy.
Your 1176, $120,000, you've never spent more than $28,000.
Oh, so culvert, pipe, that stuff to go there, right? Sorry, Bob.
Well, it's been less than $60,000, now they're on $120,000. I think Boz had $120,000 last year, they almost spent $17,000.
Okay, keep in mind you're only seeing part of the expenses, Bob. I explained this a couple of different times, the 1173 sub-fund, I can't, it's not in a budget, so you can't see it on this particular program. But like if you look over here, you can see where we've spent money. Like all of this is stuff that's come out of 1173 that would not be reflected on the budget that you're looking at.
What were you looking at? Soviet culvert, pipe and plastic, you were there.
I don't know, what line were you looking at when you were saying that?
Um, 20320 on 1176.
On which page? Are we in general and then distributed?
Highway Maintenance Repair, 47.
Page 31, okay, which line?
20320.
Culvert, pipe and plastic in '23, we spent $55,000.
Can it be moved to 1173?
When, you have to budget it out here, but it can be paid out of 1173.
Okay.
When they do it.
So I don't even see the business, you're sitting heavy on this. Do we have to specify that, that's where we get paid from, or do you just take it yourself?
You, I mean, the 1176 is your budget. So you have to budget right here. And then when the time comes to pay the bills, if it's a qualifying bill, we can pay it from the other fund because it's a sub-fund.
Okay. I'm glad you don't have to explain it like 12 times.
I'm sorry. I don't know why the state did it that way, I think it's super confusing and I hate it, but whatever.
If I was trying to think of a way to unnecessarily complicate matters pertaining to highway funds, I don't think I've ever put a thought of something like this.
Yeah, it's weird.
I hate it. It makes it hard for me to even sort what is going on vegetarily with the highway department.
I have two questions you have to make, James. Betty Jones. Computer. What other questions do we have for Betty Jones?
Computer?
Computer and one other, they have a lot.
I think I wonder.
Let me go back to her budget really quick. That $1,500 for computers, I have a question, but I thought we decided to leave it in there and move on.
Yeah.
Can you ask her?
So have we stopped?
We've died.
Yeah, side cut her, but I think Mike had asked Betty earlier a question, she's not getting back with you.
So we want to go to page 48?
I don't see anything there.
Nothing there.
I don't have anything on that one.
Page 49. Sharon, page 49.
Is this here? I think we can move this.
We'll go page 30.
There's some changes on that. Okay. Page 48. Okay. Page 48.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I thought you said something.
No, I said, where were we at?
Uh, right down to page 51, but I think we had already been over this.
Yeah, we have.
The only question mark I have is, so it's 10230 is roof cover insurance for $69,000, and it was only $22,000, did we discuss that?
Well, one thing that Matt said is the 2024 budget was a half-year budget.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I didn't get it here and give...
Yeah, he was here and not you couldn't be here, and we got it straightened.
Yeah, okay.
Got rid of the divots.
Now, while we're here though, I have a question. Although, the 144 that you guys approved last night, in the motion, I don't have in my minutes that you said a dollar amount, but he presented a 144 for more than he was budgeting. So were we going to limit the 144 to the amount that he's budgeting? Or go ahead and let him pay that employee more than he has budgeted to pay them?
We have to...
I'm sorry?
We have to keep it down under what we advertise on it.
That's what I would have thought was your intention, but I'm just making sure because it wasn't in my minutes.
Yeah.
So we're not going to improve this 144?
How we did last night, she was talking about the pay rate.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because we made that effective immediately, she's already turned in paperwork in our office, and she did it at the higher amount, and that's why I wanted to clarify, because I need to get with her and clarify.
I mean, that would be the correct, proper thing to do, right?
I would not have approved it for more than was budgeted.
Right, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We're doing the right thing.
Okay, we on page 52?
Yeah.
Sharon, remember your mic, you're cutting out on this.
Oh, sorry about that, I'm trying to read it off my page, and if I...
Reduced equipment from 75 to 50, I think.
I'm sorry, which one are we on now?
Page 32.
Local roads states.
Yeah. I had on 404, newer Zero, the equipment, we took it down $25,000.
Yeah.
Shipping and freight, we took down $500. Road signs, we took down $5,000, and the gravel, we took down $50,000, is that what everybody else has?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I got an answer for prosecutors, you want to know?
Okay.
That is for three laptops that we're working with Michael on getting. They're responsible for the purchase and buying of them, so they're going to work with Michael since last year to replace three laptops that they use in court.
Okay, so we will leave that alone?
Yep.
Okay. And then page 53.
I don't have any.
I don't have any of this at all.
Okay, are we all okay?
Any trouble to her?
She's a pre-trial person.
Tell me about what we're all okay.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Yeah. We're okay, Sharon. Forty-four.
And page 54. There's really not that many changes on that either. Good?
Yeah.
Any recorder?
Nothing there.
Page 55.
Yeah. Are you going to make that change that we already approved on the recorder situation?
Well, right now in here, you can't pass a budget for more than we requested.
Oh, that's right. Okay, that's right, okay.
So then this is good?
Yeah, sorry.
Page 56, there's really nothing.
No changes.
There you go. Page 57, 911, I think we've established everything that we're going to do on that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, page 58, and I will also share.
Same thing.
Yeah. Page 59, just the same. Okay. Well then...
We can just set a date and time to finalize it?
We would do it.
It's already set, September 17th and 6th.
September 17th? It's got to be on September 7th, doesn't it?
No, we had to wrap this up by September 7th because you have to wrap this up 10 days prior to your adoption meeting.
So we're going to go back September 17th?
To adopt, yes, if you are all done.
We had one thing left in there, we left, I think, Captain Eric, the soil, water and soil.
Yeah, why do we, I'm supposed to contact...
Terrabet?
Pardon me?
Terrabet? You're going to contact...
I cannot understand what you said.
You're going to contact Terrabet, finalize it.
Yes, yeah, well, is that what you want me to do? I'm going to contact Terrabet in county and see what we need to do.
And we have a regular meeting, what, Tuesday night?
Yeah.
Tuesday, yes.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we can...
You could continue, like recess to re...
We could recess until either right before, right before our regular meeting and address the soil and water and...
Okay.
And then have our regular meeting and we can come back on the 17th.
Do it 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday?
Hold on, let me see.
I'm not sure.
Do we want recess till 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday before our regular meeting?
I think a couple of them are checking their calendars.
Okay.
Sharon asked again, I said, nobody was answering, I said they're checking their calendars.
It's September 3rd, right?
Yeah, it's the 3rd.
Tuesday.
We can meet at 5:30 and get it done, half an hour, so...
We don't know that.
Can you do 5:30, Scott?
Probably.
Can you do 5:30, Jim? 5:30, okay, 5:30?
5:30 on the 3rd?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mike? Everybody said they could do 5:30, Sharon.
Okay, that works for me.
And then if we don't, if something happens, we can just...
We can recess, have the regular meeting, and then come back to it after the meeting.
That's what I was going to say, if you want to talk.
Okay, that works.
Are we recessed?
All right, we're recessing till 5:30 Tuesday, yes.
We're done.
Thank you guys, have a great weekend on Labor Day.